Join the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Day special session, talk about partially self-funded insurance.
So, Kelly Birkman. Kelly's here. Can't say your last name with that kind. And he's gonna kind of lead us through a lot of this. We're gonna tag team back and forth on a couple of the issues. Go through partially self-funded insurance. The last slide is the resolution I'm asking the board to pass. So, as we go forward. But what this is, a decision meeting to continue the application with Department of Insurance and to move apart from partially self-funded. Begin the next group. Okay? Ask a lot of questions in here. We're gonna do a couple of just to begin with, just got overview to see if you remember where we were and then we'll go from there. So I'm gonna let Kelly.
First of all, was everyone here when I came and presented?
When you did this, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. So I'll spend a little more time on this just because you haven't heard this before. So, the concept of partially self-funded insurance programs are that the district takes a little bit of risk for their health insurance program. The claims and expenses that members incur for healthcare costs in exchange for reduced administrative fees, more plant ownership, and much more say in how they run the program. That's kind of the trade-off that we have. So, this first slide really just compares kind of on the left side to the traditional health insurance plan. It's an insurance home plan. Today, the district is covered by Pacific Source. As their insurance carrier, basically, Pacific Source tells us what our insurance program can look like. We can have ideas, there are modifications we can make, but at the end of the day, they need to approve everything that we want to do with the health insurance plan. I view it as a reactive plan. We have our premiums set at the beginning of the year and then we kind of forget about it and the year goes by. You do get some reporting, but then at the end of that year, we react to whatever the Pacific Source approval is for that half of the year. And we view it also as a disengaged plan. So, district doesn't, in the game, the members, other than their co-pays, don't have any skin in the game. Pacific Source takes all of the risk. And it's easy and, trust me, every program that we've worked with that was fully insured, you're not as involved when it's a fully insured program just because your premium is fixed and you have no risk associated with whether it's a good year or a bad year. So, that's the current program. On the right side is kind of what we call employee health program. District ownership, the district will own the plan. We will tell the vendors that we work with how we want the plan to operate rather than the other way around. Proactive, we often get a lot of data and reporting and information that we use to proactively work with the plan to either identify risks in the population and disease states that we can help work with early on. We look at a lot of reporting for providers to see if there's certain providers that are charging more than others and are there things we can do on our side to help steer members towards the most cost-effective and high-quality providers? And in terms of plan designs, we look at things with plan designs. Remember, this is our plan, so we have the ability to adjust the plan designs however we want. So.
Are you saying we choose their doctor?
No. What we will do is choose a network of providers. And actually, what we're talking about this first year is to keep everything the same as it is today. So, the provider choices that all the members have today with their fully insured plan are the same choices that they would have going forward. So, yeah, it's our, part of our program will be to offer a network of providers, just like Pacific Source does today, that members will be able to go to or choose to go outside and go to any provider and just pay a little bit more in terms of what their cost share would be. Is that how?
Yes.
So, proactive and then engaged. Obviously, we, the programs that we work with, you will find that the four trustees and the insurance committee and other folks that are involved with the program become extremely knowledgeable about healthcare. They really start to understand the program. They understand kind of the workings of how this health insurance industry works. And they all become much more engaged and much better consumers of healthcare themselves. Plus, we do a lot of education to help all of the members really become good consumers and understand, you know, why it's important to get a generic drug instead of a brand-new drug or why it's good to go see your primary care physician before you go see a specialist. Those types of things to really help. It blows my mind how much money is spent on healthcare and how little tools are available to folks to help them navigate the system and understand what the costs are and understand what alternatives are. And these programs really help open up some of those doors. It's still a complex system, but it really offers a lot more information to members than what we have today.
So, the second slide, similar?
Yes. So, and I'll just touch on a couple of things. So, I've kind of gotten into more detail between fully insured side and partially self-funded. I think I've talked a lot about these. The only other ones I'll mention are the fourth one down, vendor partners. Today, our program with Pacific Source, they choose who all of the, all the component pieces are of the health insurance plan. They have subcontracts with other entities that they work with. We don't have a say in what those entities are or what they do or how they're measured. Under a partially self-funded program, we would be the ones contracting with those entities. We would be designing the contract to determining the terms that makes sense for the district. So, those would all be Emmett School District chosen vendor partners. The second to last one, risk-taking entity. So, I kind of started with this one. The carrier today is the risk-taking entity. I'm gonna talk about stock loss event under the partially self-funded program, but it's really a sharing of risk between the school district for low-level claims and we have stock loss contracts. And I'll explain those more in a bit. To handle some of those higher costs or more unexpected types of high-cost claims. And then the last one is reserves. Reserves today, so, if you have an insurance program, part of it is to have funds set aside to cover you if you have a bad month or a bad two months or a bad year. So, you need to have, they call it the rainy day fund. Because every program, whether you're fully insured or self-funded, every employer, every plan sponsor goes through good years and bad years. It's just the nature of health insurance. And so, those reserves need to be held. Today, Pacific Source holds those reserves. So, we pay them premiums, they take a part of those premiums and put them into their reserves. If they need them, they use them. If they don't need them, they keep them. So, under partially self-funded, those reserves all stay within the district's trust account. So, they stay in the bank account as a trust. All investment earnings and interest earnings all accrue towards the benefit of the trust. And if we don't need to spend them, they stay within the trust. So, that account is a health insurance trust account only to be used for the benefit of the members of the trust. So, it would never be used to pay anything outside, including going back to the district. You can't take money out of the health insurance trust to go pay, for example, bad fires or any other account.
Using general funds.
It's a separate fund, a completely separate one.
Okay. Maybe you go cover this. But the trust is held at a minimum and if the next year it's exceeding that minimum, then the contribution by the district would be reduced? Is that?
It could, yeah. And we're gonna get into that in a little bit, but, yeah. It gives us a number of options, actually, what to do. It's a great problem to have. We can talk a little bit about kind of where we're at with.
So, the next couple of slides, but really, I've had you look at this sheet rather than the slides. The first two columns are current insurance rate, okay? So, if you look at, when I say columns, I mean everything above, or rows. All these rows here are the current insurance rate. So, your first row, it's BrightPath. So, that's a preferred provider approach to it. Providers that are part of the network is what that is. The next section is an HSA, so that's a health savings account. So, what you can see in the yellow line is what the premiums are for both of those programs. If you go back to the second to the, this column right here, which is called district benefit, you'll notice it's the same number all the way down. So, it's pretty easy to find.
Yeah.
So, when we do negotiations, we negotiate that number. We don't actually negotiate all the rest of the stuff on this sheet. We say, we're negotiating how much money the district is gonna put into insurance this year. Now, then we have an insurance committee that goes through, and that's why most of these people here, they're on the insurance committee, that looks at those and says, well, let's use this plan and that's, you know, puts all that together to determine what we're gonna use for insurance every year, so.
What, I noticed it's all the way down. Has, is that a real number or is that an assumed number for the 19, you know, the year?
Yeah.
Has this already been established?
No, it has not been established. I didn't change it. So, you could, and I didn't change it so you could see what the cost would be different. So, that's why it's the same all the way down. But no, we're meeting tomorrow morning to begin the process of negotiations and we start actually negotiating next week, so. So, what I want you to look at is if you look at this little section to the outside edge and you look at that next set of rows, you'll see that the increase to the employee is gonna be $97.57 next year if we're on a fully insured program, okay? So, that means that if the district didn't pick up any more money, the employee would have to pick up $146.72 or $1,170 a year. So, somebody's gotta pick that up. It'll probably be shared between the district and the employee. I mean, that's generally how we go through these negotiations. I'm not negotiating, though Chuck's back here, so. But Chuck and I, we understand each other well on this. If you go down, one of the things you need to look at is that all of the other lines are employee and spouse. So, again, the 590 is in that number, but the spouse is covered entirely by the family. We don't put any money in for that. We only put in 590 in each column. And then you look down for the family, this is what's killing our families, is that right now, the family has to pay $1,325 a month for health insurance. That's after the benefit the district puts in, okay? And that means next year, if we have that increase, they'll pay $2,982 next year over the year, okay? So, our families, quite frankly, are just getting killed in health insurance. I mean, that's just one of the things that we're struggling with. You can see the HSA is a little bit less, the amount. Now, the interesting on the HSA, and you're gonna say, well, wait a minute, Rush, you're saying there's an $82.42 increase to the employee, but you're saying the cost to the employee is only $40.87. If you go back up to the top line, you'll notice in the HSA, what we've done in the past is we provided a benefit of $590. So, but the insurance costs less than $590, so we provide that $40 into their HSA account. So, we're really providing them the same benefit. They're having to pay everything up till they hit deductible and it's actually a higher deductible than the PPO out of the HSA. So, we provide that $40 additional. So, that's why it's $82, I'm adding two numbers together there, okay? That's if we go fully insured, if we go partially self-insured, which we're proposing, it's a 13.3% increase is what we expect. Now, that's still a big increase. And the thing I want you to know is that we're not just saying, oh, we can do this for a lot of cheap. We're doing it for real numbers that we think are gonna actually be based on what we're going to be next year. So, we expect we're gonna pay more next year, right? So, we're gonna have to raise more money for it. We're not gonna do it any other way. It's about a $20 difference for the employee on those two programs, okay? Any questions about just where we are in the numbers? I gave you a couple of slides which listed those out. Here's the only thing on the slide you gotta note. Estimated dollar increase to the district or split between the employee and the district would be $318,000 for the fully insured and about $254,000 for the partially self-funded.
But that's primarily, really, as I read this, that's really a hit on the employees more than, at least at this point.
It depends on negotiations.
Right.
That's, that's right.
But the employees are the ones that, if our contribution remains the same, the employees are the ones.
If the contribution remained the same, the employee would have to pick up the rest. That's right.
So, that's because of the system. The costs are going up that much.
Right, yeah. It's also due to cancer. We've had cancer and so we're hedging bet on it.
It's our pool that's bringing, generating that.
Well, two things, pool and the system. If it's just the system, it'd probably be an 8% increase, okay? The rest would be our pool. Is that about right? 8% is what they're.
What term do they use for that?
Trend, that's right, thank you. The trend is about 8% this year in health insurance. So, you'd expect any policy to go up at least 8%.
Or, I guess you call that an experience modification?
Yes.
Okay. So, I'm gonna turn this back over to you. I wanted you to put in this slide because this made us look really, really good. But Kelly wouldn't allow me to show you just good stuff, so the next slide showed you how bad it is. That's the problem with using an action word, they just keep you just darn off, you know? But what I wanted to show you here, and Kelly can talk about this, this was our premium expenses for May 2016 to April 2017, okay? So, we paid $2,072,000 to the insurance company and they paid out $1,375,251 was operations, gonna say that, charges to that. So, the difference that they kept there is what they keep putting in their accounts. And we have about six years where we were about this range. But then you're gonna hit a bad year. You gotta know, it's gonna happen, a bad year or two. So, Kelly, I'll let you talk about the next one if you're sure.
It's not as fun.
The only thing I'll say about this slide is, is the insurance carrier that we were with at this time made a profit of $445,000 off the district in that year.
Plus what they charged for administrative costs.
Right. So, this is another time period, again, this is Emmett School District data. Premiums were $2,241,000. I should mention, so the blue bar, the blue section of the bar on the right is the claims cost and the red section is the administrative fees. So, we add those two together to come up with a total. So, in this, in this rough period, again, the insurance carrier, because we were fully insured, the insurance carrier took a loss on this one. Their loss was $225,000 to $226,000. So, that kind of gives you a sense as to when we have a good year or when we have a bad year, we can have some ranges that are significant. The savings when we have a good year can be incredible, but there's also the risk on the other side that if we are exceeding premiums. And this is, this is a recent period. This is one of the things that contributed to the 16.7% increase that Pacific Source gave us on our fully insured book was because our historical experience has been higher than what their premiums are. So, they have to make up not just medical trend of 8%, but also this difference in terms of the shortfall that there is for this year. They need to make up for next year too. That's what was driving a lot of that 16.7. But I wanted to do this mainly to give you guys a sense as to what the range is that we're talking about. And it can be hundreds of thousands of dollars savings, but there's also a sign.
How many people are in our pool?
We have just under 300 employees, just under 400 members in our pool.
The members, the other members?
Members would be spouses and kids, yeah, another hundred spouses and kids. And that's, so essentially, we have one dependent for every three employees. It's another way to think of it, which is low in general, but for school districts and at it all, it's really not because most districts are feeling the pinch with respect to how much employees with families have to contribute, just like, just like we talked about for families here.
Are you the actuary? And if you look down the road, five, 10, 15 years, you know, what's your crystal ball telling us?
The crystal ball is saying, well, I'll get to the crystal ball. All right. Here's what the crystal ball's saying for the next year is the next slide. So, we went through a pretty extensive process looking at one of the vendor partners that we'll have, which is called a third-party administrator. And that third-party administrator is really going to be our, is going to perform all of those insurance company functions. So, they're the ones that manage the provider network. They're the ones that adjudicate all the claims when they come in. They're the ones that are gonna be our call center. So, when you call that 800 number on the back of your card, it's gonna be someone at the third-party administrator that's gonna be the district's support for member questions and inquiries. And they're also in charge of all the negotiations in terms of getting discounts from providers for Emmett School District members. So, that's our, that's that third-party administrator. So, we went through a pretty extensive process. We concluded it. April 5th was our, was our finalist presentation. Ronnie tended. It, we had three finalists. We decided on a third-party administrator of Pacific Source. So, Pacific Source today is our fully insured carrier. They also offer third-party administration services, which says, we'll still do all the things that we do for you, but we're gonna share the risk with you now instead of Pacific Source taking all of the risk. So, having them be the incumbent was a part of the, definitely a plus for them. But they also provided the most competitive proposal and they had one of the best finalists presentations as well. So, they, they really have stepped up really since we called them two years ago and asked them to give us a bid to help us on a fully insured side. So, the numbers that are here assume them as our third-party administrator. So, this includes all of their provider contract terms, all the negotiations they do with the hospitals and the physicians and the pharmacies in terms of discounts. And that's what that, that first number at the very top, that allowed charges is. That's the total, our total expectation of charges for the 12 months that begin in September 1st.
That's the premiums.
This is, not yet. This is, so this, when I say charges, these are like, if you will, the bills that we're gonna get from all the hospitals and physicians and pharmacies for the next 12 months. So, this is their, so this is the cost of healthcare, the cost of treating the members. The second line is the member cost sharing. So, that assumes no changes to the benefit plans that we have today. So, keep the benefit plans as they are. Those are the member share, which includes deductibles, co-insurance, copayments. Go to the doctor and you pay $35 or you have to meet your $2,500 deductible. That's what that member cost sharing is. So, that's being paid for by the member. So, what's left over, that third line, is what we expect the district claims cost to be. Is everyone with me? So, that's, we call that the variable cost because under a partially self-funded program, that's the number that's gonna depend on the actual claims for the district members. So, we're gonna look back at the end of the year, next year, and we're gonna say, okay, we thought it was $2,540,000. Where did we end up relative to that? That's the risk that we're taking, is that that number's gonna either be higher or lower.
That's, we're trusting you.
You're trusting me, yeah. The one guarantee I make is that it will not be $2,540,003. If it was exactly that, then I'm going.
You'd walk on water.
I'll just have to buy one house again. So, that's, that's the claim cost, that's the variable cost.
Actually, we're not trusting him, we're trusting part of this next part down below.
And, you know, just so you know, that, that expected district claims cost wasn't, I'm not the only one that put numbers together. We asked all the third-party administrators to put numbers together. We asked some other stock loss carriers to put together. So, this number was pretty much right in line with all of those other outside independent estimates that we got from, from organizations who have, who have their own actuaries putting this stuff together. So.
I'm kind of assuming that you put a number together and then maybe added something just for conservative.
3%.
3%.
Yeah, yeah. This is 3% higher than, than the true expectation. And that's, one, because by nature, I'm a little conservative, I put a little margin in there, but also because it's one of the requirements that the state has. When you set contribution rates for a self-funded plan, you have to have some, it doesn't say it has to be 3%, but 3% is what we took to use. So, yes, there is some option, yeah. So, the next, the next three lines, four, five, and six, are what we call the fixed costs. So, these are not dependent on whether or not we have lots of utilization of the plan or a little utilization of the plan. These are, this is kind of the insurance part of our program, those lines four and five. So, specific stock loss, if you remember, was our protection against having specific individuals have very high levels of claims. So, if I'm a member of the district and I, let's say, my wife and I have a baby and it's born prematurely and it has to spend three months in the hospital and it costs a half a million dollars or $600,000 for this one baby. What this premium does is it limits the district's exposure to $100,000 for any member for the whole year.
That's per incident, per person?
Nope, per person for the whole year. So, if I have $100,000, once I have $100,000 in claims for the year, every dollar that's spent after that or caring for me is paid for by our stock loss carrier.
Is that per person, per family member, or?
Per covered person. So, if I'm, if my wife and I are enrolled in the plan, $100,000 for her and $100,000 for me.
And $100,000 for the baby.
And, and a baby, yeah, it's a baby too, yeah. So, that's the first level of protection. So, $100,000 is a little lower than what the actuarial tables say, but again, we're trying to be a little bit conservative given that it's the first year of the plan. What that means is we paid just a little bit more in those premiums because we're asking for a little more coverage at $100,000. We would typically look at maybe $125,000 for you guys, but we decided to be a little more conservative on that side. And then line five is the aggregate stock loss. And what that does is, even though we have protection for that one or those two members that have very high cost claims, we also purchase protection that says, well, what if the district as a whole has? What if we have a bunch of people that are at $50,000 or $60,000 in claims that don't hit that specific stock loss, but still increase the claims for the district as a whole? So, what this coverage is, we see it's $33,000. This gives us protection and it's based on a percentage of your expected paid claims. So, I'll use a number, so our row three is, I'll say $2 million. The numbers that you show in front of you, of you here, show the maximum claims that the district would be liable for at 20% above that $2 million. So, or 120% of it, so 2.4 million. So, $2 million is our expected level. We, the district, have liability 20% above that to 2.4 million and then the district won't pay a dollar more than $2.4 million in claims for the year. So, that's, and then I'll, I'll get to the worst-case scenario in a second, kind of talks through that a little bit more. But that's the second level of protection that we have. Again, not for that individual member, but it's more aggregate or broad-based protection for the plan. Row six is the administrative fees, which includes the cost of the TPA. So, Pacific Source, it would include any fees that we have to pay to the state. There's a child immunization fee that we have to pay, just like every, usually the insurance carrier pays it and then just passes it through in premiums, but because we're now taking that risk, we would pay it. That's included here. Fees for my services, fees for legal services, those are all included in that administrative fee total of $174,000. So, those are our fixed costs again. So, those we can expect to pay regardless of what the claims are. So, our total down below in the row eight, $2,682,000. That's that 13.3% scenario that Wayne just mentioned. The line below that, below that is the 16.7% increase, $2,779. So, we're showing annual dollar savings of $97,000 or 3.6%. And those are expected savings, again, based on $2,540,000 of claims.
Have you looked at the makeup of our population doing health? Have, have you looked at the makeup of our population, do we have, you know, older people, younger people, female versus male, kids versus, you know, grandmas? I mean, you've, you've looked at all that.
Absolutely. We, so, so we've looked at, at demographics, which kind of incorporates a lot of those things. We looked at historical claims experience. We looked at current provider discounts versus historical provider discounts, to make sure we capture any changes in those. We've looked at trends in utilization levels for district members. We looked at prevalence of disease states. So there are some disease states that diabetes, asthma, heart disease, some of those things that over time can generate high-cost claims. Yeah, so we've looked at all of those things. We've also looked at your high-cost claimant experience. So who do you have today that's incurred more than $50,000 in claims? We've looked at those really closely because we looked at, you know, what's the condition that they have? What kind of treatments are they getting? What's the prognosis in terms of moving forward? Are there future treatment plans in place that are less or more costly than what they've had in the past? So we looked at all of those things as part of the development of that.
I don't know if you can answer this, but would be a self-funding program influence our hiring practices?
It should. This is going to be, the big thing about self-funding is it's a, it's a financial arrangement. Really, it's a behind-the-scenes thing. The way we expect it to occur and the way it usually occurs for us is the member will still have a card that says "Pacific Source" on it. They will still have the same number. Their benefits will be the same, their providers will be the same, the pharmacies that they go to will be the same. So from the member's perspective, it's not going to change. From the plan's perspective, there are a lot, number of rules in place around hiring practices and what you can ask and what you cannot ask a prospective employee, right? Which is pretty much nothing. You, you really had to touch the topic.
But you know, when I go borrow money, they want to know my credit score. And then buy insurance, they want to know my credit score. sooner or later, maybe we will want to know what their insurance score is.
Yeah. It, you know, it's funny, the Affordable Care Act really limited what can be done by insurance carriers in terms of finding out health information about folks. I mean, it used to be a case where if I was an individual and I wanted to go get insurance, I had to fill out this long application and list, you know, what's every illness that I've had? Have I been hospitalized? What prescription drugs am I taking? You know, there's this long checklist of have you ever had any of these diseases? And insurance carriers would take that and they would underwrite you based on that. And that's no longer allowed. So, so it's happening in the commercial marketplace. In the employer marketplace, there's a law called HIPAA, the Health Insurance Privacy Act. Yes, I forget what else that's called. But it's all about protecting health information. And that, and that goes not just for new hire practices, but for everyone. When, when we provide reports to folks on the health insurance program, it's all with data that's de-identified, aggregated, to make sure that there's nothing in those reports that could lead anyone on the insurance committee or on the board of trustees to know who's got what illnesses or who's creating, generating a lot of claims. That's all very, very much from everyone's view, so. Great question. Any other questions on this? This was kind of, when we met in February, these were the numbers that we were waiting for. And typically we see, I think I, I think I probably mentioned it, between 4% and 7% savings from doing the self-funding. This is a little bit less than our 4% to 7% primarily because over the last 18 months or so, we've had more than our share of high-cost claimants. And so that specific stop-loss premium, row number, from number four up there, is higher than what we would typically see. Our expectation is that we're going to return to more normal levels of high-cost claimants and that number should come down from according. So, but that's the reason why it's not between 4% and 7%. Any other questions on this? Am I clear for time? All right. We always also like to present the worst-case scenario. So in the good years, life is great, we have lots of reserves, trying to figure out what to do with extra funds, all those things. But I think before you make this decision, it's important to understand what's the absolute worst-case scenario that the district could face. I want to make sure that August 2020, we're in a position where we understand exactly what's going on with the plan, which we will. But I also want to make sure that you folks all know exactly what, what the decision is that you're making today. And I will say, the worst-case scenario is, is usually built to occur about once every 70 years. So, so there's like a 1 in 70 chance that you would ever get to this level. And that's just based on.
70?
70. So what this really does is, is that first line, instead of that expected level of $2,540,000 in claims, this represents is that max, that 120% above that. So this is the maximum amount of claims for the district that we would be responsible for. $2,395,000. The, the stop-loss premiums and the administrative expenses are the same. Those are fixed costs, so it doesn't really matter. So our worst-case scenario is $3,230,000. That would be the, the most that we would have to spend, which would be $340,000 more than what our expected levels, what our expectations were on that side of the table. And, and I will mention, so, so I've been working with Pacific Source, who also offer the best proposal on stop-loss premiums. And so I've been working with them to provide a proposal, not just at the 120%, but at, at 115% of our expected level. So what that does is it, it reduces the maximum exposure from this 2.4 million, probably by about $100,000. So if, so we're, we're going to run the numbers. I just got the proposal from them about an hour and a half ago. So we're going to run the numbers to see if that's a better option for the district or not. But that, that would reduce what our worst-case scenario is. But they're going to charge us more in insurance premiums to cover that additional risk for them. So, so we're going to weigh those two and see if it's a better option. But as, as, as a sense today, this is the, this is the, the worst-case scenario. And, and again, I, I have to show this. I will knock on wood, I have never been with a plan that's ever hit the worst-case scenario. I think the worst that I've seen is, I'm not going to, I'm not going to. The worst I've seen has been 108% of expected claims. That's been the worst case scenario. So. But this is, it's still a possibility, because that's why it's still a possibility.
You have a question.
So Kelly, what happens there with 341166?
Yeah.
That's new money we have to find. What takes care of that?
So the, the 341166, so, so the Department of Insurance says, "Emmett School District, if you want to be a self-funded plan, you need to have a rainy day fund in the event that this occurs." So I'm going to skip, I'll, I'll come back to this.
This is your margin call.
That's the margin call. And so what the Department of Insurance says is that, "Emmett School District, on the first day of your new self-funded insurance plan, you need to have X dollars in your account to cover this potential deficit." And basically what they say is, on, on the first day of the plan, you need to have enough to cover half of that deficit, that potential deficit. By the end of the first year, you have to have enough funds to cover the full deficit. And then thereafter, you just have to maintain funds in your reserve account.
Is that, that 341, is that a calculated number or is that a, it's an experience modification number?
Correct. No, it's a calculated number really based on what that aggregate stop-loss contract is and then what your fixed costs are.
So we got to come up with $341,000 next 12 months to.
That's.
Create a.
Kind of, yeah. Kind of, yeah. And we're going to talk about reserves in a second. It'll show exactly what, how the formulas work and what pieces they. Any other questions on this? All right. I'm going to touch on one more thing before we get to the reserves conversation. So, so I mentioned before that we're going to have two very distinct entities here and this is a requirement of pretty much any type of self-funded trust, especially those in the public sector. And that is that the health trust has to be completely separate from the school district. So it's a separate entity. There will be a separate board of trustees. They will have separate, their own financial statements. They will have their own separate bank accounts. They will contract separately with their own, with the, all these providers. So it's not a district. The district is the sponsor of the health program, but the health insurance trust is the entity that manages and owns the health insurance program.
Do they have bylaws or?
Yeah, yeah. There's going to be a trust, a trust document, there will be bylaws. All of them, yeah, all of those things will apply. So the district is the sponsor because the health trust doesn't have employees or they need a sponsor. The school district will be the sponsor, but that's really their role. And, and those rules are in place really to make sure that funds aren't commingled back and forth, that there's not using the health insurance program for the wrong reasons.
Those flush fund.
Right, yeah. And, and there have been too many incidents where that was the case, which precipitated all these rules. So usually it's someone bad apple that kind of spoils it for the rest. I mentioned that third bullet already, that the, all the monies that go into this health trust can only be used for the benefit of the members. So once they're in that health trust, they cannot be taken out to cover a budget deficit or to increase salaries or to cover a capital expense for the district. It can only be used for the benefit of the members of the trust. So that could be plan design improvements, it could be wellness initiatives, it could be reducing future premiums, it could be those types of things. If there's excess premiums, but all those monies that flow into the trust are going to flow and then stay there.
Can the trust be dissolved in the future if we decide not to continue?
Absolutely.
And it comes back to the district at that time?
Yes, that's the one time you can do it, is if you just, if you dissolve the trust, yeah.
It's our decision.
The decision, the decision to dissolve it, I think would probably have to be, boy, that's, that's more of a legal question than actuarial question. I think it might have to be a joint decision between the trust of the health, the trustees of the health insurance trust and the school board trust. But don't quote me on that. I'd have to, yeah.
But, but the district wouldn't be obligated to keep funding?
Absolutely. No, the district has no obligation to fund the trust. If the district said, "We don't want to be the sponsor anymore, we want to wind this down," then.
Essentially it's dead at that point, anyhow.
Yeah. And then I kind of talked about this last one. So funds will transfer. District will be paying funds to the health insurance trust. So there'll be three, three primary sources of income for the trust. The, the district contribution towards health insurance benefits, the $590. The contribution that employees make through payroll deductions will be flowing into the trust. And then contributions that retirees make, those pre-65 retirees that are on the plan, that pay the premium, those contributions will flow into the trust as well. And then I guess I should include interest income and investment income that I talked about before, from reserves would all stay within the trust as well. From those funds, the trust would pay all of the expenses out. So every week, Pacific Source will send us an invoice. It says, "Here's what your claims were for this week, here's the invoice." So that will happen weekly. Once a month, they will send us an invoice for administrative fees. Stop-loss carrier will send us premium remittance request for stop-loss premiums, legal expenses, actuarial expenses, those will be billed each monthly as well. So those funds, those payments will all come out of the trust. So for those months where the premiums are greater than expenses, we have an income and where they exceed it, then we'll have a loss for that month. And there'll be a whole separate set of financial statements that will apply just to.
School audits the account.
We will have regular audits done at the end of each year, just like we would any other organization.
I'm talking about Pacific Source. We know the.
Pacific Source? Yeah, those audits, those audits are done at our request. So the way we've got the contract written with Pacific Source as our third-party administrator is we have the right to audit at any time with notice and, and as often as we want.
Who, who pays that bill?
The, the cost of the audit, the trust would pay the cost of the audit. And, and we've done them before and, and to be honest, the first level of audit, we would help with doing that first level of auditing and, and making sure that things were.
We be in the trust?
We, sorry, we being, it would be done by the trust, but Sofa Health would do it as part of that first level of audit. Sofa Health, who's the company I work for, we would do it as part of our services at first level and we wouldn't charge extra for a first-level audit. If we had findings and required more intensive information, then we would come to the trust and say, hey, we found some things, here's the discrepancies. Here's a potential savings we think we may be able to generate through an audit. And then the trustees would make a decision as to whether they wanted to move forward.
Can we jump ship if we want to? But that means if we were, if it, Pacific Force is somebody we don't want to do business with, can we find another provider?
Great question. Yes, this, I should have said this at the start. This is the Emmett Independent School District Healthcare Trust. So, so you can change your third-party administrator, you can change your stop-loss carrier, you can change your pharmacy benefit administrator, you can change Sofa Health, you can change any of us. It's, we're, we are, we are vendors to your program. So yes, you have.
So there's no contractual agreement to hold us together for a period of time?
There will be, absolutely. We, I think it's, it's probably in the interest of both parties to do that. So for example, Pacific Source, we have a three-year agreement with them. They've agreed to hold their fees for a three-year period. But we have the right to terminate the agreement. It's either with 90 or 180 days notice. I don't remember which one to say that. But that would be, which, to be honest, you would need anyway because there is a pretty significant lead time required for a TPA. But the stop-loss contracts are all annual, we can change those at any time in the year. The agreement that was with Sofa Health, I believe, is 60 days. So if you wanted to change actuaries. Legal counsel, I don't know that we even have a contractual agreement with a, with any kind of lead time on a, you know, on termination. So, so we, definitely those options are there to interchange. And, and to be honest, we will, we'll look at stop-loss carriers every year. We will look at third-party administrators probably every four to five years just to do due diligence as a trust and make sure that the deal that's on the table is still the best deal.
We want to keep them honest.
Absolutely.
I will say one thing, that for example, your stop-loss, your third-party administrator, currently your insurance company charges you more for administration every year. So they're getting a 16.7% increase in administrative costs. We have a contract now with them that says you will hold your administrative costs the same for three years.
At flat dollar.
There is some, there is some advantages to that.
Absolutely. And that's, you know, I think, you know, the one thing that we, we don't show in here is all of the comparisons we've done are for the, this next 12-month period. What we always find is that the benefits of self-funded programs really bear fruit second year, third year, fourth year. Yeah, down the road. We've had successful, some of the successful school districts that, that, you know, everyone else around them is laying off teachers and they're hiring them because, you know, they've been able to save significant money in their health insurance, enough to be able to afford our teachers. All right. Any questions on this relationship? So two separate entities. All right. Wayne, you want to talk about reserves?
Reserves, so we'll talk about this. But this is, when we're talking about reserves that are required, September 1 is, the first one is called incurred but not reported reserves. So what that says is that you are going to have health insurance activity for the month of September, right? But you're not going to pay for those until October, November. So this is a reserve that pays for that. So you have to maintain that reserve in there so that you have money to pay for in, in your future pieces. And what they, what the Department of Insurance requires is that that has to be in the account upfront, okay? So they require that upfront, even though you're, to be honest with you, in September, we would spend very little. Uh, most of the insurance that's gonna be paid off in September is gonna be paid by Pacific Source under our current contract, because they're gonna have to do that runout period, okay? It doesn't just end September 1 for them, they've gotta pay all the bills that happened before September 1.
Until somebody's healed.
Till somebody's, yeah, well, until, until they're done, they go to another doctor September 2, right? You know what I mean? So, um, uh, so, so we won't pay out very much. What we will pay out probably pretty quick in the month is, uh, is pharmacy. Because pharmacies are done on a card and they're just kinda, they cruise fast. The doctors' bills take longer for those bills to come in. But that's what this is for, incurred but not, not reported reserves. The second one is the surplus funding requirement. So I think you saw the number up there, $350,000, $354,000, uh, something on that. So we have to have half of that at the beginning of the year in the count, September 1, when we start. So that's $187,641. So the total reserves due 9/1/2019 is $395,829. Almost $400,000 has to be in the account at the beginning of the process before you start, okay?
How does that compare to what we pay now, the 1st of September?
We don't pay that.
We don't pay that much?
No.
We don't pay any of it?
We don't pay any of it. This is a reserve, okay? This is the thing that's kept me up at night to see if I could come up with a plan of how would we be able to cover this reserve beginning of the year.
And how are you gonna do that?
I'm glad you asked. You wouldn't expect me not to have an answer. I wouldn't be here if I didn't think that would do us, to be honest with you. This is the one, probably Cheryl, I've got more hours pulling our hair out about. On our fund balance, our largest fund balance, single amount of fund balance, is the amount of money that of employees that we budget, we budget for all employees on health insurance. But we have a group of employees that don't take health insurance, okay? Their husband has health insurance, or quite frankly, they just can't afford it. I mean, you know, there's that piece. So we, we believe that we can budget next year $225,000, and we will use those funds. That's actually less than what we, uh, we have. I think Cheryl heard it was out this year, we're 230... Whatever the number is. I, I've gone, anyway, it's pretty close to that number, but it's, we're 230-something where we are. So, that's, that's where $225,000 of the money would come from, from a budget. The other account we have is forest funds, and I've been saving forest funds for the past few years. We receive about $27,000 a year in forest funds. This would leave, uh, some money in our forest funds right now. So we'd still have a little bit in there, but, uh, we currently, at this moment, we have $90,000. We'll receive another $27,000 check in May from the county for forest funds.
So that basically only $2,000 difference, I mean, you can, you spending almost all of it?
Uh, well, uh, I believe the difference is about $15,000 difference.
Oh, okay.
I think I missed something out there or something. Yeah, Mike, they, yeah. Cheryl, when I figured this out, it wasn't all forest funds?
Forest funds, it was $90,777 plus an estimated $25,000 in work ethic.
Okay. So pretty close to spending all of it, but...
Yeah, $10,000.
And then we're gonna have to work, work in the budget and find $55,000 additional dollars. Now, we may do this a couple different ways. One, we may look at 115%, reduce that amount down that we have to have in there. But we think that we can work our budget to find that $55,000. We can budget that amount into the, into the system for it. From a cash flow perspective, this is the other thing I've quizz Cheryl on. From a cash flow perspective, this isn't a problem for us in having the money. The state of Idaho funds us 50% of the amount of money they're going to give us for the entire year, August 15th. So the amount of money in the bank is large. So this is not gonna make a cash flow problem for us as we go through the year, it's just, yeah.
But a good deal of that is dedicated to the certain...
A good deal of that is dedicated, but it's, it's dedicated in fund balances throughout the year, so it's not, that's not gonna cost bad. The other thing they do require, which this is probably causes more consternation than these other three numbers, is they require all the premiums in there for the month of September, the first day of September. We don't take premiums out until payroll, which is around the 26th of September. So, the money's sitting there, we know we'll run the, and, and part of it's an accounting system because we have to take money out of people's paychecks to pay this, right? From that part of it. So what this is, is what we will do is actually remove $205,000 from each one of the account lines of health insurance. There are 117?
106.
106 account lines of health insurance in our budget. I know you love our budget. There's 106 lines of health insurance. So we'll take the right amount or as close as we can come up with from each one of those health lines out, and then we will write a check on the 26th and return it back to the district, not to the fund, not to the, the...
Trustee fund.
The fund. The fund already will have the money, so, so we'll turn it back to those accounts so that it actually balances. But that's, that's one that Cheryl, uh, the, the real problem is you've got 106 lines you gotta go through and pull the right money out, and it's just, it's gonna take somebody, probably gonna have to buy somebody dinner and maybe a really nice cake to sit through and go through all that work, uh, from that part.
But you'll only do this one time.
This is one time. And here's one of the, the things that we've been realizing, is that come next year, see, right now, our August payment will go to Pacific Source to fund their system. Next year, our August payment will go to us to fund our system. So it actually will continue to fund itself from here on out. It's a one-time problem that we have to get through.
If you could just, you're saving $225,000 from people not on health insurance. How are you realizing that savings?
So, for our, we have always budgeted that, so that's in the budget.
So you're budgeting as if they were buying health insurance?
Yes.
So that's a, that's a, a credit in that account?
Yes.
Okay.
So what we're gonna do, is we're gonna reduce all those accounts by that amount of money. Cheryl has a spreadsheet that'll show you exactly every account and who it is. She knows that. And, and we're gonna actually have a separate account line that we will budget it into, and that's what we'll pay the trust from. So, so we, we have to be able to count for it so everybody can follow the money. I don't want anybody not being able to follow the money, so that's, that makes sense?
Yep.
Questions on this?
So, $600,000, uh, September 1, count both...
$600,000 in that account, September 1. And, and you know why I'm not too worried about, I mean, if it goes really bad throughout this year, $351,000 is the max amount. So we've actually put the money in the account at the beginning of the year to cover our, our worst-case scenario, so we're not, I mean, in that perspective. Now, we'd have to do some figuring next year, but it's not like...
You're being very optimistic.
I, I'm worried about this a lot.
I can, I can see that.
I, I, well, th- this is what I get. For, honestly, I gotta be honest with you, if we hit the worst-case scenario, that's not gonna be our worst problem. Our, probably our, uh, our, our schools won't be, we, we won't have, we will have so many people that have been ill that year, that we're gonna have more problems on subs and everything else. I mean, I mean, you, see what I mean? You know, 'cause that's, the, the $100,000 problems, the, the one or two people kinda having problems, that's, that we've kinda got covered. To hit the other one, everything's just gotta go bad. You, you really gotta have a pandemic sweep through your school, town. You know, I mean, I'm not sure that's gonna be our biggest problem at that point.
Yeah.
To be totally honest with you, that's what I worry about for this. Ever since I've looked at these numbers, I've started worrying about that part of it.
Spanish flu. Spanish flu.
Questions? I appreciate your questions, Terry.
I'll hang you over there.
Well, just for clarification, if, if we hit the one out of seven, and I, I know, you know, it's kinda ridiculous that I win mega tomorrow night, too. We can talk about that. But if we did, because we're responsible for this, worst-case scenario, you're still covered. We don't go broke. The school's got all kinds of problems because we don't have kids with teachers in front and all that stuff. But at that point, we back away and get back into a traditional... Because we've used up our reserve and it doesn't end us, it just stops. I mean, that's, that's worst case, right?
Correct.
No, the first year you're covered, it's the second year you gotta worry about.
That's right.
So you step away from it because you, you can't take it to risk. You don't wanna fund.
Well, you don't have the funds to take the risk.
So, the reason I got interested in this, as we've gone through this, is a couple reasons. One, um, as a superintendent, I've been very aggressive to try to drive down health insurance costs. So one of the things I have done since I've been superintendent here is about every two years, we go out and bid for health insurance, which is not done by very many districts at all. And, and as I started looking at that, what I found was that I could go out and save five, I get a 5% reduction in health insurance by just moving to another company every two years when we were doing it. And the reason it was is because we were having lots of these really good years. And I calculated we would probably, if we had started self-insurance at that point, we would've done about $1.2, $1.4 million. That, now, that's being optimistic. Now, the reality is, you have a year like this, you saw the slide, and, and, and I gave him a bad time, but I'm really glad he shows you the worst, right? I, I, I think you need to see all of it. But, but yeah, you're gonna have a bad year.
Typically, one out of every four or five years is a bad.
How's, how's solving this, Pacific Source? I mean, does the insurance reinsure or...
They do, yes.
And, and who up the chain carries that burden?
I'm not sure who the, I'm not sure who the reinsure is for Pacific Source, but they absolutely have one, but it might be at, say, a million dollars. So Pacific Source, so for Emmett School District member, we would have the risk for the first $100,000. Pacific Source would keep the risk up to, say, a million, and then they would have reinsurance for amounts above that. And it's possible that that reinsurer could...
Reinsure.
...settle, people up the chain.
Yeah.
Like Lloyd's and London.
Right, and are the, that's where the, the line ends up, right?
So, there's a resolution for you, uh, the insurance committee's here. We, I sat down with the insurance committee last week and said, okay, here it is. What do you think? Here's all the issues, you wanna move on this? So the insurance committee was unanimous on that. We'd like to, I'd like them to come, a couple of them come and just tell them why they think we should do this, or if you wanna quit here at 5 and, and pass the resolution, you can do that.
Mr. Rush, I have one more question, please.
Yeah.
So say the optimism doesn't work, and we pay, pay out our 300 and some thousand, those funds that are left in that trust account, do they go back to the employees?
If, if we dissolve the trust, we can dissolve the trust, so those funds can go back to the district. I mean, it would be in the best interest for the district to allocate those funds towards health insurance. Maybe, maybe reduce their normal contribution to it, but I think that would be, to, to stay in their standing with the Department of Insurance, that's what I would do.
Okay.
Yeah, and the districts for the employees putting in the majority already, so... But, but, for example, a few years ago, we had a program, I forgot what it was called, where we were putting in some money for, I forgot where it was. There, there's a health insurance or, Cindy remembers what it's called.
Yes, I do, yeah, I call it pool, or the health insurance.
The health insurance pool, so we were putting money in it. It was, we decided to dissolve it. So what we did with that money was take it and move it to pay premiums. It was $80,000 or something.
Lot of money, though.
Well, a lot of money, compared to two points out, you know?
You're gonna create a, a, um, a board for this trust?
The board's already created, this board, this board's pointed them. Ronnie Weeks is, uh, is one board member. Cindy is another board member, and Susie Morgan's the other board.
You got three members. And do they serve a term, or if they retire, how do they replace?
The way, uh, the way that the, the trust agreement is set up today is that they are not, there's no term limit, they can stay as long as they want. Well, I shouldn't say... Uh, they, they would leave, uh, by choice, or if the, uh, or they can also be removed.
Who removes it?
By this board.
Board has the say-so?
Yes, it has the power to do that.
And is this a laborious effort, or is it just one, we said we're not happy with person A, and that's the end of it, or?
I, in terms of the process that you have, I, I don't think it's a laborious process at all. I guess you do have to have a process, but...
Oh, of course.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll give you a little understanding of that, though, Terry. So this goes into that account. We, as the board of trustees of that account, really don't have any control over it because it's paid out automatically. So none of us should not be touching any of it.
None of us or none of them?
None of the, the board of trustees should ever have anything to do with it because it's all gonna be automatically withdrawn, it's gonna be automatically put in.
But we don't breach this full of money.
Does that make sense?
Well, I understand that, but then...
It's not, it's not like...
Who, who carries out policy? Is it policy inherent in the, in the, the policy itself, or do they? What, what is the purpose of them if it's done automatically?
The, the financial transactions are done automatically. So the board of trustees is there...
TPA.
To help make decisions, to, uh, manage the vendor contracts and, and to, and establish the contracts with all of the vendors, uh, strategic planning. They would be involved with discussions around, suppose we wanted to add a direct primary care program. Say, trustees would be involved in understanding what are the benefits, what are the costs, uh, and then making the decisions around those types of things.
So they're independent?
Independent of the school district, yes.
Okay.
But they will work closely with the insurance committee.
But we are responsible for the funds, with that being said.
Correct.
With our life.
Yeah, and they have to fill out quite a document, a lot of papers, long picture of it.
And also required to have to do shared insurance, that's another requirement.
Is there bonding being a necessity to here?
That's, yeah. The interesting in Idaho, it's actually, there's, the bond and the fiduciary assurance are together. They're actually separate, but it's actually one policy that covers that.
And who carries that policy, the insurance commission?
We have generally, uh, we use a, a Morgan company and probably ICRMP, although I haven't talked to them, whether ICRMP would carry it or not, we use another. Morgan companies are, are brokers, so...
Who, who pays that premium? Is that paid by the trust, gets paid for by the trust, yeah?
Chuck, do you have a question?
But I assume that those three, I mean, the whole point of those three would be, Ronnie would speak with the board, say, hey, this is what we're looking at. Susie Morgan would talk to employees, Cindy would talk here in this building, and those three make a decis-, it's not just them, those three out there making decisions on their own, right? And then this board ultimately can make a, a change, can address that they think this is out of control, Ronnie's not listening to them, the three of them are doing crazy things, is that, is that right?
That's right, but they, but the decision-making on insurance would still rest with our insurance. In other words, the insurance committee would be making a recommendation to the trust, uh, trustees. And the trustees could look at it and says, well, you know, I think, you know, having, uh, rates at $20 a month is a great idea, but it won't, the trust won't survive that. We can't do it. So, so the insurance committee will make recommendations, but it's the trustees' job to make sure it financially doesn't, and it's our actuaries' job to make sure that...
We're making correct decisions.
You, you know what the numbers mean in writing.
Would the makeup of the trust always be a school board member, somebody from faculty, and somebody from administration, or is it... Say, say Ronnie resigns tomorrow, we haven't had that happen at the board ever.
There's always tomorrow.
There's always tomorrow.
This month. That would be my recommendation, but the board would appoint a new trustee. So that would be the board's decision, this board's decision. And this board made the decision to appoint these three trustees, so, yeah. Yeah, I would say yes, but that's the board's decision.
I have a question, who turns in the Department of Insurance application with all of the stuff that goes in so that in-process... So that in-process, it will now say completed, so that everything is completed by September 1st, so that, that nobody misses out? Is, I, I, I like the idea of this and saving money and.
Right.
There might be a little bit of a, in the beginning, but I just don't wanna miss any dates.
Yeah, um, so, so we've been working, so, so it's, it's a combined effort in terms of putting the application together. District staff has some portions of it, we have some portions of it, legal counsel has some portions of it. Um, legal counsel has been tasked with putting it all together and they've already been talking with the Department of Insurance, letting them know they've got, they've had some preliminary back and forth already with respective trust agreements and other, other, uh, documents that are required. So there's already been back and forth, but, um, our goal is actually to have the application in the hands of the Department of Insurance in early May. So they're trying to perform their, they have a requirement around how long they have to review it. So we wanna make sure that they have plenty of time to ask questions and we can get ready to resolve so that they're ready to.
You talk to legal counsel, that's your legal counsel?
No, it's legal counsel of the district. His name is, uh, Mr. Hamilton, but not this person. Name Gabriel Hamilton. He's, actually, I think there may be only one liar. Okay, so last time we did this, we had hired a liar and we trusted this liar and realized that didn't work. For a number of reasons from that perspective. We've changed legal and, and this process, Mr. Hamilton has, I say that.
I look at you.
You're looking at me.
His name's Gabe.
Can I use Gabe?
Gabe is already, um, so, so when, after this all fell apart, a few months later, we brought Gabe in and we had a meeting, a group of us went and met with the Department of Insurance and just said, okay, we know we screwed up, tell us what we need to do, what's wrong, how do we fix this thing? And so we had a, it was funny, I could, I, we walked into meeting, tension was pretty high in the Department of Insurance. And I will tell you, within fifteen minutes, tension was gone, they understood where we were coming from. And, and honestly, I, I knew we were in pretty good shape when, uh, one of their, uh, persons said, well, we're gonna require them to do this. And the Department of Insurance lawyer said, no, you're not, you can't require that. And so, so I, I kinda said, okay, now they're, now they're gonna work with us. Now, Gabe has worked with them for a long time. He's actually speci-, the, the lawyer we had, we didn't know, was very familiar with personal law, which is federal law, and knew that world, worked all the way across the country, has a great reputation in that world, but doesn't have a great reputation in working with the Department of Insurance in Idaho. Gabe has a great reputation and works with the Department of Insurance in Idaho. He already has the trust agreement done. He's going to prove, if we make a decision, he's gonna decide, he's gonna hand it to them right this week and let them go through it before we even do our application. Because he said, that's gonna be probably most of our questions, so I wanna get that worked out fast so that we can move forward with the Department of Insurance. So I just have a lot of confidence in him.
Listening to Gabe speak that day, he was pretty much the only one that even dealt with this.
That's Holland and Hart?
Yes, yes, he's with Holland and Hart. And he came and met with our, our three trustees. And also just to go through.
Or was it, am I wrong in that? That's the way.
No, I, that's basically, he is, he is the one.
I mean, that's the way it sounded. Cause he listed two other individuals and he said, but they, they deal with this facet and we deal with this facet and this is what I deal with.
So we have confidence, that's why, and, and honestly, that's why tonight's a decision-making. If we don't decide now, we just can't do this. I mean, there, you know, there's.
The time's up.
We're, we're, our timeline's here.
Uh, Mr. Rush, the, this says that, that the resolution is to complete the application. Are we gonna have more decisions to make down the road or is this, is this the decision to go with self-funded?
This is the decision to go with partially self-funded. With, with a caveat in there. If we get in the middle of Department of Insurance and it falls apart, we'll go back to. I mean, we're gonna fully move forward as if there's no problems.
We're committed.
But, but I don't think you'd likely say anything different, you know, there's.
And the, and the one, one, I will mention one helpful thing in this is we are with Pacific Source in this matter either way. So if it does fall apart, you're still with Pacific Source. So it's not like you're.
Yeah.
Having to worry about finding a new provider, you know.
Yeah, Madam Chair, the only other question I'd, I'd like to address to, uh, uh, trustee Weeks.
Sure.
Uh, you're, you've been on this, are you confident that it's the right way to go?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm not gonna say that it doesn't make me nervous. It's, it's a lot of money to have to worry about coming up with, but the only question I have is, I, I want to know, and I, I didn't ask this, are, are, are teachers behind this? Is, I know it's a cost and savings.
And that's why I.
All are, I, I wanna hear from you before I just check off on it.
I get a lot of people that will come in when we get the rate increases in tears, just, I can't do this, I'm not gonna do this, you know? And I feel bad for them, then they'll go check the exchange and come back and go, oh my God, this is way better than the exchange. But I do have a lot of people, when we, when we talked about it last year, we had so many people that were gung ho or excited about this because they were excited that they weren't gonna get these massive increases every year. That's the way it's been. And we, uh, weren't gonna, maybe to look at changing our coverages or lowering the premiums. Put a spouse on is just horrendous. And kids don't cover that, but the spouse alone is just ridiculous. And since we allow the spouse to be covered under our plans, they cannot go to, they, they can go to the exchange, but they can't get the subsidy. We would have to say we do not cover spouses at all in order for them to even do that possibly, that avenue. But, um, we did ask a lot of our teachers about that and they did not want us to take the spouse on. There isn't a lot of people have spouses on. But I do get a lot of that. Just last year, they were gung ho, we had that kickoff. And the amount of people that went to that, it was everybody. But that kickoff, they're like, natural pass, DPCs, oh, we're so excited. We had all these natural paths, different avenues there. I've never seen so many people excited, they come up, oh, this is gonna be great, it's gonna be great. And we all did, we all built that in, all the early people and all the, and, um, and we, it definitely. And that really, really did, you know, like, they were, they, I don't know about right now, but back then, I know that they have it. Why would you?
My department, when we hit that wall and we couldn't go forward, I had a lot of my staff saying, are we gonna have the opportunity to try to do this? Can we make it work? Even though, you know, we had to go back to the other one at that moment, they were still hoping that there was a chance we could still pursue that avenue.
My staff were probably the lowest on the pay, um, pay scale and increasing, um, insurance rates every year, every year. And the one thing about it is if we go partially self-funded, we do have an opportunity in time. It's not, it's not a microwave kind of a plan. It's definitely a slow cooker plan. It's gonna take us a while to build those reserves. But in time, we have the possibility of lowering our premium cost, lowering our out-of-pocket or deductible cost to our, our staff. If we stay where we are, we are not, they're not gonna decrease our premiums. They're not gonna give us a better rate. It's not gonna go backwards, it'll continue to go forward. Perhaps it's only gonna go forward three or four percent instead of what we're looking at this year, but it's never gonna go backwards. If we do a partially self-funded, we have the opportunity of possibly reducing how much out-of-pocket or premiums for our staff and our retirees. We are in the driver's seat. You know, it's, it, to me, it's, do you wanna buy? Do you wanna be an owner or do you wanna be a renter? Personally, I would rather be an owner. I set the values, I set the rate. If I'm a renter, then I just pay what you tell me to pay, and that's what we're doing now. We're just renting our coverage, we're paying what you say to pay, and we're moving forward. Me, I'd like to save a little money, I'd like to help out our staff a little bit more. The wellness committee is committed to educating our staff of wellness, of good health, trying to get those diabetes numbers down, the anti-inflammatories, all of those kinds of things. We are engaged in that. So I think that going partially self-funded is just the topping on the cake. I think we really, really need to.
So this thirteen point three percent increase, it's a pill to swallow, but you get the, the trade-off is three years, that's it. Amorized it over three years, it's, 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 uh.
Palatable.
And not only is it palatable, but we also get to, um, we get to create the plans that we want. Like, uh, some of my staff were so disappointed, you know, because we were gonna try to get a natural pack on and, and, and we, and we'll be able to do that next year. Um, but because we couldn't do that, Pacific Source didn't offer that, you know, we did get some acupuncture in there. But they were so disappointed that they didn't get that kind of ownership that they were looking for. And I think going this route, we can't. I think we can't.
Chuck.
I, I can remember going to an insurance, I think we were in the pool, Cindy and Cheryl, it was probably fifteen years ago. It was, I wanna say it was thirteen percent. And I'll bet you in the last fifteen years, and I'm just guessing, but I'll bet you we've gone up seven, eight percent every single year. There are times when we're in double figures and there are times when it's four or five, but I'll bet seven or eight percent, we can't stay up with that. Fifteen years ago, as a parent, what? How are we gonna buy textbooks? How are you gonna pay teachers? How are you gonna stay up? They keep getting their money. And so thirteen percent is a big pill, but it's not as big as a sixteen percent. And that's what we're facing right now. And they're, it's all too expensive for us to keep trying to fund the school. But that, that increase is just, you can't be, it, it's just, I remember fifteen years ago thinking, I, I just don't even think this is a business that'll work. Probably have to look for another job, you're crazy. I would say since Wayne's been here and another guest coming at you, Ted Lloyd's work, I, I'll bet you he's come close to paying his salary. Because one thing, every year, and I won't negotiate this year, but I've negotiated with Wayne every year since he's been here for the, representing the union, is every year he comes to the table and goes, okay, where are we gonna go? Been talking to this insurance company and they say it's gonna be, uh, twelve point seven percent. And so we're gonna talk to somebody else. Somebody else is, well, we can do it for seven and a half. What? Seven and a half? That, that's a lot of money. And so we look around and as, and then the insurance committee talks about it and it's like, okay, but that's, there's one problem. We're gonna go from St. Al's to St. Luke's because they still control, right? It's not partially self-funded. And we know that's gonna step on a few employees' toes, right? Somebody's gonna have to change a provider and they're in the middle of a serious, you know, they've got a kid that's got a particular procedure coming up and that's serious business and the insurance company, we don't look at that and go, oh, well, big deal, wouldn't save a hundred grand. We don't do that, you know? We, we hem and haw and we've saved a lot of money just because, I don't think that's probably in his job profile. And it's, it's heavy lifting. I mean, it's, we don't, we don't do this stuff lightly, but it, it keeps, it, it frees up that we can buy a round of textbooks two years from now and, and not have to figure out, you know, do fundraisers to buy textbooks. And so that work, to me, this is just one more step in that. This is, and it's a bigger step in that part of it, we haven't heard, is your partner, is part of this is taking ownership in education and we need to become better employees, we need to become healthier adults. And, you know, I, why do I get fat every single school year? And, and we might go, well, that's difficult, but you can go for runs in the summer, work out, but that's gonna end. As you get older, right? Before long, I'll have sugar problems or I'll have a heart attack. And, and, and we said, well, that's a personal problem, but if you look at education, it's, I think there's a lot of that. Teachers get into this rut and there's this mental load. We need to get to be a better district. We need to be proactive and say, how are we gonna get active? How are we gonna get wellness? Now, we can't tell, we're not gonna be telling them that they're great teachers, we've gotta go for a walk tonight. But we want to take ownership instead of just going through the motion and, yeah, we gotta pay ten percent and we can't afford it and the board's trying to figure out how we're gonna pay for this. I just think this is, yes, there's a little risk, there's a little, it's always scary to step out there. But I think we've got all our bases covered. Worst-case scenario, it doesn't, doesn't end us. If it goes totally wrong, and that's really bad, though, we can still move on the way we work and we can even make a decision in a few years to do it again. But I, I totally believe Wayne, if we'd done this six or eight years ago, hindsight's twenty twenty, we'd probably have a million, a million and two, and then a two-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-dollar loss year. If we'd pay that, we'd still be fat. And we'd be going, oh boy, it's gonna go up thirteen percent next year, big deal, we're not gonna hurt our employees. We're not gonna have people that don't make very much money going, I don't know if I'm gonna be able to cover my, my spouse and my kids. My husband, blue collar, he's got no insurance, but two thousand dollars more. Right? I mean, I just think it's, I hope for the best here in the short term and I think we'll be fat and sassy and we'll be going, we're doing what we need to do. I, I'm, and I don't hear anything different from our employees, from the people that I know. They like this proactive, let's be informed and, and take charge of our, our healthcare.
Thank you for your confidence.
Thank you.
I got one other question, though. Ten to three years. Is there gonna be a limit on how much we can increase? Cause they're gonna want an adjustment.
Uh, yeah, we, well, in, in three years, we will, what we typically do is we'll start with Pacific Source and say, what's your offer? And then we'll say, how long will you guarantee it? And at that point, we'll determine, and then we'll negotiate with them. And if we get a good, uh, a good renewal, which, after three-year contract, we can see them ask for maybe a four or five percent increase.
Well, I, I don't wanna come, have them come back and say, oh, forty percent increase.
No. If, if they did that, then we would go back and we would go through the TPA, RFP process again, yeah.
Cause I, these people are gonna realize the savings for the next three years and I want them to keep that savings.
Absolutely.
Well, that's, that's gonna be my comment. So on all the training that I took and that I learned, they have a vested interest as a group of teachers. It's only gonna work if they want it to work. Bottom line. Just like Mr. Alexander's saying, how, how do you prevent from getting sick? You do things to prevent from getting sick. So they, in, just like a business owner. Anytime you have a vested interest in something, you're always more willing to grab a hold of it and go with it. My initial reserve was just the amount of money that they gotta rack their brains over with, you know, to get in that trust. Once we're past that, I'm confident, if we can get through the first year, I'm confident it will go.
He's, he's a guy, we're gonna put our finger out.
Hold it out, Kelly.
Better not be a line.
And we don't know much of his background, but he was the first actuary for who?
Kaiser Permanente. So, yeah, so I, I guess I can start a little bit. So, um, I've been in the self-funded world for twenty-one years now.
Not that old.
Fifty-one. Goodness. Um, so, um, yeah, my background is, is, uh, first actuary Kaiser Permanente. I basically built their actuarial department in California. They're a ten-billion-dollar-a-year organization. Um, after that, I went to the consulting world. I've been doing consulting, uh, for the last twenty years. Um, and, um, almost all with self-funded programs like yours. Um, we work with groups that are smaller than you, uh, you know, a hundred and fifty to two hundred employees. I have clients that have sixteen thousand employees.
Are you a native? I mean, do you live here in Idaho?
I, no, I live in Seattle.
Seattle?
Oh, you blew it. You're doing so well.
I wanna say one more thing about, about this.
I know, and you would think he lives here.
There are other districts that actually are self-funded, a lot have been very successful. There have been some districts that have tried and unsuccessful. And I, I've asked the ones why they were unsuccessful. Some of them don't even wanna tell you, but what I will tell you, they did not have an actuary. They had somebody selling them a program, not somebody that was a conservative actuary that could say, I'm sorry, you can't cut your. It's, I mean, you know, we're not cutting our rates, we're increasing them by thirteen point three percent. And that's why you have to have that piece. Or I think you go, I, I think that's the thing that, that will kill you at the end of this.
I, I've gotten calls from school districts in Idaho that have said, we're in big trouble with our self-funded program, can you help us? And, and most of the time, it's the advice that they got from their broker who said they knew what self-funding was all about. Really is, so.
Okay, we're.
I think you got, I think you got good people in there to make it happen, but still, I really do.
Are you ma- ready to make a motion?
I, I think we should.
Okay, you're all ready?
You're the guy that needs to make it.
Do we have a motion to approve, to move forward with the partially self-funded insurance?
Actually, I can't, I don't believe I can make that motion, we're a trustee, can I? I don't even know if I can make.
Madam Chair, I, I moved out the Emmett Independent School District, complete the application with the Department of Insurance to switch to partially self-funded insurance.
with the Department of Insurance to switch to partially self-funded insurance for the 2019, 2020 school year.
Is there a second?
Second by motion.
Second by Bob. Good, you'll real call vote. Bob?
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
Jefferson?
Aye.
Terry?
Yo.
Bill?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, aye. Thank you.
Oh, you got it? Okay, we need to make a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All of them favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? I didn't hear Bob's, okay. Ayes have it.